Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present. And as I ask you to rise for the pledge, I will ask you to remain standing because we have a special feature today we're going to be sung to for the Star Spangled Banner by Harmonium, so please remain standing. Please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) 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 Oh, say, can you see by the long, dark, lean light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare upons the sea-gaze air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was beautiful, and I'm about ready to go home, except it's a tough act to follow. I see Dr. Ann Matlack in the back there. Jeannie, why don't you come up forward also, because Jeannie presented this yesterday as Dr. Matlack was recognized, and it's her hard work that leads that beautiful music. So it is our pleasure to present this proclamation for the second time to you in 24 hours. Whereas, a Harmonium Choral Society honors Ann Matlack, DMA of Madison, for 25 years as artistic director and celebrates her visionary leadership in the choral arts. And whereas, Dr. Matlack's passion for musical excellence, creative talent, seemingly endless energy, and innovative program has led the Harmonium to be one of the finest choral arts organizations in New Jersey. And whereas, in addition to Harmonium Concert Season, Dr. Matlack also serves citizens in our community through the Harmonium Outreach Program and leads singers on concert tours, sharing music, and goodwill with audiences around the world. And whereas, Dr. Matlack creates many opportunities to further advance the choral arts with commissions, workshops, seminars, innovative programs, such as the annual New Jersey High School Student Choral Composition Contest. And whereas, Dr. Matlack supports and mentors singers and musicians of all ages for personal and professional achievement. And whereas, Dr. Matlack enriches, inspires, and transforms the Madison community and surrounding areas through her leadership in musical performances, such as the Grace Lenton Organ Recitals, Grace Community Concert Series, and the Madison Holiday Arts Festival. And whereas, Dr. Matlack builds and strengthens the Madison community and surrounding areas through her artistic involvement and work with Grace Episcopal Church, the Madison Arts and Culture Alliance, and other organizations. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim, yesterday, March 10, 2013, as Dr. Ann J. Matlack Day. She didn't know in advance, so she knew to celebrate her day, in recognition of her appreciation and her achievements during her 25 years as artistic director of the Harmonium Choral Society. Congratulations. Again, thank you for everything you do. And if you're not doing anything, 12 noon, New Year's Day, I think we might want to have a return performance. Yes, all right, thank you. (Inaudible) While I'm up here, I know there's some young playwrights in the audience. Please come forward. And then all the other, and John Petrowski is here, who are representatives from the Playwrights Theater. Come on up, don't be bashful. All right, now you can turn around and face the audience as accomplished playwrights. All right, we have another proclamation. This is one of our favorite annual ones to do. We've got, we were sung to, and later this week you can go see some great productions. Whereas, Playwrights Theater, founded in 1986, has nurtured creative writing skills for all ages through the New Jersey Writers Project, co-sponsored program, and New Jersey State Council on the Arts Department State. And whereas, Playwrights Theater has produced performances and offered new plays to local and statewide audiences as a result of its dedication to prospective playwrights. And whereas, Playwrights Theater brings a unique program to the community through its local in-school playwriting initiative, the Playwrights Young Playwrights Program. And whereas, a Playwrights Theater will present a performance of student-written work during the Madison Young Playwrights Festival to be presented this Thursday, March 14, and Friday, March 15. And whereas, Playwrights Theater has continually received a positive response from students, teachers, and parents for its effectiveness in working with all students, many of whom have realized the benefits of self-discovery and expression through playwriting. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim March 2013 as Madison Young Playwrights Month. And in doing so, I extend the very best wishes to Playwrights Theater and to all young writers with our community for continued growth and success. Further, I encourage the public's participation to attend performances and commend our young playwrights for their creativity and artistry. And accepting this on behalf of Playwrights Theater, Rebecca Fields, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd love to say a few words. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. This is a wonderful honor for Playwrights Theater, our partners, the Madison Board of Education, and most especially, our wonderful, wonderful playwrights. We are so proud of you for your creativity, and most especially, for your commitment to finishing your work. Your work will be presented, as described by the Mayor this week, and we're all looking forward to seeing it, so thank you.
Thank you. Now... Now, while you're still standing up here, I'm going to put you on the spot for a second, if you don't mind, and handle the microphone. If you could state your name, your school, and the name of your play you wrote, okay? Is everyone okay with that? All right, here's your chance. You will be on TV, but no pressure.
Hi, my name is Zachary Vincent, and I go to SVMS, and I wrote the play Bully Days.
Hi, my name is Casey McGuff. I go to SVMS, and I wrote the play In a Live Work.
My name is Katie Dorr, and I go to Central Avenue School. I wrote a play called Best Friends Forever.
My name is Abigail Ma. I'm from Torrey J. Sabatini School, and I'm wrote a play called The Kidnappers.
My name is Cecilia Smith. I go to Torrey J. Sabatini School, and I wrote a play called The Fairy Stone.
My name is Janay May. I'm from Central Avenue School, and I wrote the play The Big Move.
My name is Angie Glavsky, and I'm from Central Avenue School, and I wrote The Haunted Penguin.
My name is Courtney McCormick. I'm from Torrey J. Sabatini, and I wrote the play The Adventures of Alex Delmbach.
My name is Adhik Rahimispoura, and I'm from Kings Road School, and I wrote the play Joey and the Trumpet Disaster.
Hello, my name is Sally McDonald. I go to Madison Junior School, and I wrote a play called Queen of the World.
Hello, my name is Michael Bennett, and I'm from the Madison Junior School, and I wrote a play called Avoiding the Inevitable.
Hi, my name is Zoe Aguirre. I'm from KRS, and I wrote a play called The Friendship is Over.
Hi, my name is Nina Bisco. I'm from St. Vincent's Martyr's School, and I wrote the play Lost.
Hi, my name is Stacey Spear Two. I go to SVMS, and I wrote the play Destination Translation.
Thank you all. And we have one little thing so you can take home with you, because we know when you are a creative writer, we just, you never know when creativity hits you, and you have the greatest idea for your next play. So here we have official Borough of Madison patfoleos, little notes, so you can take your notes, so next time your play hits you, here you go. Remember when it's March 14 and 15, this Thursday and Friday. All right, thank you again for the attendance. And one last thing before I go back to my seat. If I could have our representatives on a cut-a-thon for Union Beach Memorial School. And we have Sal here, hopefully, and Dr. Allison Adams, I know I saw you, come on up. And Carol Osborne, Kay Forrest, Sandra Cullen, and Peg Cody. As most of you know, we have a partnership with Union Beach as they recover from Hurricane Sandy, the devastation. Their recovery is not weeks, it's not months, it's going to be years, and so the more we can do for them, the better off they will be, and the sooner they'll get back. And so Sal has had a tradition of cut-a-thons, and so Salvatore Minority Salon, along with accessories with style, and Dr. Allison Adams, ran a cut-a-thon, and we now have a check that we will present to Union Beach Memorial School Education Foundation.
Well, I'd like to say, thank you very much. We are very happy and proud to be a part of the Chamber of Commerce here in Madison, New Jersey. We're honored and thrilled to have, take action here and show that everyone that needed some relief from Sandy. I want to thank all of those, my team, Carol Osborne, Dr. Allison, and Kay, for their participation in making it a great success.
Mayor Smith from Union Beach was hoping to join us today, was unable to. He will be here on April 8th at our next council meeting, but we will make sure that these checks get to the Memorial School Foundation. Thank you so much for everything you do. Hold it, yes. It's now been memorialized. This is a new thing with our check, our bank, is we can video during the council and it gets deposited right away, so I just have to show the backside now, but thank you again for everything you do. Let a few people file out before we go on to a few more comments, and then the business at hand. All right, before we lose everyone, I want to mention the Employee of the Month. Employee of the Month is Jim Sanderson of the IT Department. One of the challenges about working IT is if you're doing your job well, no one knows that you're working hard, because everything's running smoothly. And so Jim is one of those people we regretfully sometimes forget about him, because he does things so well, and we have things running smoothly. But what we recognize for him right now is preparing the fleet mileage report, which is part of our ability to achieve our sustainable status, sustainable New Jersey status. So we thank Jim for all his work on creating spreadsheets and everything possible for that. Also, Valerie Figueroa of the Construction Department was selected as a 2013 Technical Assistant to the Construction Officer of the Year by the New Jersey Technical Assistance Association. She will be honored by her association and the Department of Community Affairs at an awards luncheon on May 2nd during the Building Safety Conference in Atlantic City. So next time you're in here, go down the hallway, you'll see a smiling face at the desk straight ahead, and congratulate Valerie on her recognition. A few other comments, not to put Jim on the spot, sometimes things technically don't work very well, and today was one of those. Our phone systems in this building went down, so if you tried to call Borough Hall, you were not able to get through, and Borough Hall was not able to get out. So if you called on Friday and didn't get a call back today, that is why. A part is being delivered quickly, and we'll be, our phone systems will be back up, but rest assured that 911, Public Safety, Building, Police, Fire, never lost phone usage. And one other thing to mention is we have moved the March 25 meeting to the following Monday, April 1, and this is, the 25th is the first night of Passover, so we want to honor and respect those Jewish faiths, so we have moved our meeting to April 1. So at this point, we'll have two meetings in a row, April 1 and April 8. And we will, if we don't need that second one, I guess we'll cross that bridge, but right now, no meeting March 25, and we'll go to April 1. A motion for the minutes of January 28, 2013.
So moved. Second that.
Discussion. Okay, seen unrolled, oh, that's right, you did have, thank you.
I'm just wondering if we should, regarding the MAS presentation, should we amend it to include some of the numbers that they presented specifically, not necessarily their forecast, but the amount of funds raised to date? I can double-check and get those numbers if you'd like, I don't see them in the minutes.
What we can do is, maybe the best thing is, since we don't have it, is hold off.
Okay.
And...
Yes.
So we'll get those numbers in, and we'll approve these minutes at the, so if you get forward that, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion, actually, we have a motion on the floor, so do we need to withdraw the minutes? Or we'll just, yeah, we'll...
Well, there's no second.
There's no second, right, yeah, thank you. So a motion for the executive minutes of February 11, 2013.
A second.
Oh, we did have a second.
You did have a second.
Okay, so a motion to withdraw the minutes of January 28.
I will do that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, got to stay with the scorebook here. All right, executive minutes of February 11, 2013.
I'll move them. A second.
All right, these have been discussed and executed. Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, introduction of 2013 Budget and Tax Resolution R95-2013. And we, cap back ordinance first, so I will call up ordinance 2000, ordinance 3, 2013 for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 3, 2013, calendar year 2013, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Council discussion, this is on the cap bank. Seen un, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right, budget introduction. Statement by the Borough Clerk, please.
Upon introduction and adoption, the 2013 Budget and Tax Resolution will be published in summary in the Madison Eagle on March 14, 2013, with a public hearing date set for April the 8th at 8:00 PM in the council chambers of the Hartley Dodge Memorial, at which time and place all interested individuals will have an opportunity to be heard, and there will be consideration for final adoption. A copy of the budget as introduced will be filed in the Madison Public Library and the Morris County Library for public view, as well as RoseNet, our borough website, rosenet.org.
Right, may I have a motion for R95-2013?
So moved.
I'll second that.
And discussion, we also have David Evans here, our auditor, to present. Ben, do you want to start, and then we'll get Dave up, and then we'll take further discussion.
Fine. Thank you, Mayor. I'll apologize to those of you who've heard pieces of this before. I've changed it somewhat by way of introduction, only because we've changed the budget a little bit. We tweaked some numbers, but substantively, it is the same budget that you saw at our first meeting. The headline number, which I know is the most interesting one, is 1.48%. That will be the tax rate increase for 2013. That number, just to put it in context, is below the state mandated cap of 2%. It's less than the predicted rate of inflation, and it's less than last year's increase of 2%, some 25% less, and it's the lowest increase since 2003, which I think is worth pointing out. Our level of taxation is still 1.654 million, less than what's allowable by the state's regulations, and it's 2.03 million less than the state mandated spending cap. So we're not, we're not up against any ceilings. We've been, I would say, conservative and positioned ourselves properly. This lower tax rate has been accomplished without any reduction in services, without any addition to utility charges, or any forced layoffs or furloughs of borough employees. In fact, it's added to the operation of our borough, because it allocates an additional $250,000 for capital improvements, which brings that total to $1 million, an increase of 33% over last year. I think we'd all view that as a very positive development. We've also designated funds for capital projects allocated to our utilities, $100,000 to electric and $200,000 to water. So you might ask, well, how are we able to do this? Well, first off, the budget of 2012 was an excellent budget, and it just panned out. I mean, sometimes you put in an excellent budget and events conspire against you. That was not the case. It was a strong budget and performed, by and large, as anticipated. Expenses are down, because our employees are contributing more to their pension costs and pension plans and health costs, and also we had several senior employees retired during the year. And our departments have certainly increased their attention to cost-cutting, which is realized in this budget when you see departmental expenses. And if you were here for the presentations, a number of department heads addressed the issue very tangibly and with suggestions on what they'd be doing in the future. And the national economy is a benefit as well, insofar as the inflation rate's down, which impacts our cost for goods and services. Now, what else does this budget do? Well, continues the long-needed improvements in Madison's finances that began last year. We've rectified the funding imbalance, which should continue to improve. We've utilized less surplus, and we've stabilized surplus with growth in all three surplus accounts. After several years of decreases in our surplus account, we were able in 2012 to generate a healthy increase, something this budget is intended to continue. There were no absolute guidelines for how much surplus we should have, but based on municipal accounting rules and the experience of other municipalities, it would appear that we're very close to levels that we should be maintaining. The same is true for the size of our fund balances. Now, as many of you are aware, in 2012, one of the little nicks of the year, S&amp;P did affirm our AAA rating, but put us on negative outlook. If you want to know who else is on negative outlook along with us, it's Hempstead, New York, and Irving, Texas. That's three out of 166 municipalities. So we're in an unfortunately small group, and for a lot of reasons, it's in our interest to get out that list. This budget does a number of, continues a number of the things that happened this last year that will do exactly that. Now, I'll tell you, just as an aside, what S&amp;P thinks about Madison would be one of the, I'd like to say irrelevant considerations, but this year it'll turn out to be quite relevant, because we anticipate going into the market, capital markets, middle of the year. We're not sure the exact amount, that'll be the subject of a subsequent meeting, but when we do that, we will get rated, and that AAA is worth, depending on the maturity of the securities we issue, somewhere between 40 and 50 basis points, which is significant money. But the other part of this is their conclusion was that management's failure to rectify the structural current imbalance and continued surplus declines could result in a downgrade. And unfortunately, that conclusion is not without merit. We have, we had gone through several years where we had been spending down our surplus. Fortunately, that should not be the case this year, and it certainly wasn't last year. Now, having said that, you have to ask the question, well, what can go wrong? And if we thought nothing could go wrong, we had two issues just recently that suggested that you have to keep your fingers crossed, even when you have a great budget. One was the most recent Pfizer's announcement, they're leaving Madison. They're our second-largest electric utility customer and our largest property taxpayer. So that is not good news. Now, there are lots of things we've done, and can do, and will be doing, to minimize the impact of that event, but the point is, that's not the sort of thing you want to have happen, and that is the kind of event you need to have some surplus and reserves against. Moreover, as you're all well aware, although we completed a budget, our national government's having more trouble, and the result of sequestration, excuse me, is that you may recall, Councilman Landrigan had indicated to us that his meetings with FEMA had gone very well. The $1 million or so we had laid out would be largely recouped from FEMA. We were anticipating $750,000 of it. We're still optimistic, but a little less than we were, and also the timing is a bit more in jeopardy. We just don't know how FEMA's budget's going to be impacted and how they're going to react or behave. or behave. So, I bring those up, not because they've changed our budget, but rather because they've indicated, I believe, the wisdom of doing what we're doing, which is to continue what we started last year. And I, I want to say that one of the important aspects of this is we were able to do it thanks to the hard work of our employees. But there were three employees, I've singled out before and will do so again, for the amount of work, and the consideration, and the dedication they've shown to this effort, and that's Ray Cody, Jim Burnett, and Robert Califford. I also want to thank a lot of you, a num, a large number, surprisingly large, but that was good, number of Madison residents contacted me with questions, with ideas, little probing. It was all very positive. I mean, there's no such thing as a bad question, and indeed, it informed our discussion, the four of us, and was beneficial in a lot of ways. So, never hesitate to get in touch with us. And the same thing is true of a number of our, of my fellow members on the council, who as well asked a fair number of questions, and indeed, had some very good suggestions. What I would like to do now is, is turn this over to Dave Evans, who's a partner at Nissavosia Vacia, Nissavacia.
Nissavasia.
Nissavasia, thank you. A, it's a certified public accounting and advisory firm. David has 39 years of client experience, including planning, review, and execution of annual and special audits of municipalities, counties, municipal utility authorities, New Jersey Boards of Education, county colleges, libraries, and various federal and state grants. Needless to say, he's quite experienced. He's also very familiar with our finances, because for many years, with only the occasional interruption, he's audited our accounts. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave.
Good evening. I want to start by, first of all, commending you all. We represent about 58 towns. My guess is about 55 of those towns would kill to be in Madison's position. You, as a governing body, and your administration should be commended for your efforts and your history of forward thinking. Budgets that you have presented in the past have not only looked at how it impacts the current year, but you look ahead to the following year. And this, 2013 is a critical year for you to look forward. Your councilman mentioned the Standard and Poor's rating. Should that be downgraded? And with the state of the economy, it's, it's not beyond reason that it would be if things didn't change. You're looking at a significant increase in interest expense for the bonds that you're contemplating this year. The number that was given to me was approximately $10 million that was going to be issued. If you were to be downgraded, you can expect an increase in interest rates of 25 to 50 basis points, or half of a $10 million bond sale. That would increase your interest costs by well over a half a million dollars. So, it's important, and I applaud you all for taking that direction, that this budget reflects the type of thinking that Standard and Poor's feels that you need to continue to keep the financial integrity that you've demonstrated in the past. You have a very modest tax increase, very small impact to the average homeowner. Again, most of the towns that we represent would be extremely happy with the tax increase that you are proposing this evening. With that in mind, I was certainly happy to take any questions that you have. Remind you that for 2014 and 13, we do have some challenges. You will have 300,000 less in delinquent taxes to collect this year than you did last year. We have asset money of almost $400,000 anticipated as revenue in 2013 that you will not have in 2014. This is the first year of your reassessment or revaluation. Two things tend to happen in the first year. The tax collection percentage tends to go down, tax appeals tend to go up. It is too early to tell what type of impact your reassessment's going to have. We'll get closer as the April 1st deadline, we'll have a better idea, but you could see a decline in collections percentages this year, and you could see an uptick on tax appeals. Oftentimes, people ask me, how much surplus should a town have? And it's, it's always, as your councilman had indicated, there's no statutory rule, there's no rule of thumb, but there's two benchmarks that I've seen used quite often. One is, at a minimum, you should have one month's worth of expenses. The upward tier of that is you should have one month's worth of tax levy. And I say that because you're responsible for school and county taxes, regardless of what happens in Borough Hall. And I've found that many towns that have the surplus level add the one month expenses, and I'm referring to surplus, that's cash surplus, and I'm referring to surplus after the anticipation of the revenue, because once you take it out of savings, it's gone. And you're at the lower end of that tier, but I find a lot of towns that are at the lower end of that tier do struggle during the summer months with cash flow. So, in terms of where should your surplus be, I feel you are at the lower end tier of where you should be. You're certainly moving in the right direction. The mention was Pfizer was leaving, that could be an issue, certainly could have a detrimental impact to your tax base next year. So, I guess what I'm saying is, while you are moving in the right direction, there are, there are obstacles and hurdles that you must face this year that could have a negative impact for the 2014 budget. I've mentioned earlier, there's a discussion of going out to bond this year. If we're bonding $10 million, as was represented to me, this is going to increase your debt service next year from 300,000 to 500,000 easily. So, I don't want to be good news, bad news kind of guy, but while there's good news, there is cautionary news for next year. So, with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Questions for Dave, before we do discussion?
If I may.
Yep.
We are in a non-self-exam year, which means the state examines the budget, which means in all likelihood, they won't be ready with their examination by our required hearing date of April 8th. So, what will likely transpire is that we will have the hearing on April 8th, and we will not take any more formal action until we get approval from the state to either amend the document or adopt the document.
On the council, okay, Rob?
We're on negative watch for one or two levels? Are we, S&amp;P has put us on negative watch for one or two notches?
I don't know. The report I had just said that they could be downgraded.
So, we don't know if it's?
To what extent? No, sir.
And the 40 basis point differential is between AAA and AA?
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
All right, I will be on hand at the public here on April 8th to answer any questions that the governing body, the public, may have.
Yep, so that'll, I know I saw a hand in the public, but that'll be your opportunity, April 8th, to?
Thank you all, have a good day.
Ask directly. Other comments? Jeanne?
I would have to agree with Ben that this year's proposed budget has many positive aspects. No changes in municipal services, no electric and water rate increases, and flat departmental operating expenses, thanks to the hard work of all the departments. The budget provides continual full funding plus utility subsidies for the library. It absorbs the Health Department's shortfall due to the loss of contracts. It increases funding for the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps by 25%, and the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts by 11%, and continues our financial support for other organizations in town. It absolutely is a sharp contrast to the challenges we had in the past few years. It was a relatively straightforward budget year. Thanks to everyone's hard work, we had an exceptional year in surplus generation during 2012. We generated a total of $8.9 million of surplus, $4 million of municipal surplus, 4.2 of electric, and $650,000 of water surplus. However, I cannot support the budget introduction this evening for several reasons. One, as you all know, that the budget is one of the most important jobs of the council. I will not rubber stamp a 44-page document placed in front of us right here without having the opportunity to review it. I requested at the last budget meeting to have this ahead of time, so we can have plenty of time to review it, but we didn't get it ahead of time. Number two, the document included an open space tax rate of 2%. This means a tax increase of 63% due to the revaluation. Mr. Catalonello and I would like to maintain the open space tax at the current dollar amount by reducing the open space tax rate. We also asked for a public discussion on this issue, but no discussion at a council meeting has been scheduled yet. I'm not going to vote yes to the increase in this document. And number three, I do not support a tax increase because there is no demonstrated need for the tax increase. In 2012, we underbudgeted revenue by over $1.4 million. This year, the grossly underbudgeted revenue is further reduced by just about the amount of the proposed tax increase. The proposed amount is small, but it's not justifiable. Let's use the Health Department as an example, since it was the only department that made the revenue numbers available to the council. As we heard at the last budget meeting, this budget reflects all the expense, all the expenses of the Health Department, but the budget does not reflect the total values of the signed share services contracts. Furthermore, the budget does not include the $100,000 of revenue outside of the share services contracts that the Health Department generates. If we correctly reflect the $134,000 of revenue just from the Health Department alone, we could reduce the tax increase from 1.48% to 0.48%. I agree with the administration, the CFO, and the finance liaison of not including the potential FEMA reimbursement, revenue from the potential GBR redevelopment, and potential other additional share services contracts, because we don't want to include the dollars we may not get. However, the budget should reflect all the signed revenue contracts. At the last meeting, Mr. Catalonello and I recommended that we reflect the actual values of all the signed contracts in this year's budget, but the idea was rejected. We subsequently asked the administrator to provide the contracted values versus the budgeted revenue amounts. The information provided to us this afternoon by the CFO showed that we underbudgeted the revenue from signed contracts by $144,000. I would like to ask again that we correctly reflect the contracted values by adding $144,000 to the municipal resources line item and reduce the amount that we asked the taxpayer to pay. If we further include just a portion of the other revenues that the Health Department will share generate, we can give taxpayer a break this year. Since we include these other revenues in our calculation of our per capita cost for health services, there is no reason not to include them in the budget. It was discussed during the budget discussion repeatedly that the budget is very conservative, and that the increase will give extra flexibility for just-in-case scenarios. By underbudgeting revenues and overbudgeting appropriations alone, the cushion built into the operating budget is at least $2.7 million. We expect to generate over $4 million in electric and over $650,000 in water utility. That's plenty of cushions, even without any tax increase. The finance liaison also told us that our S&amp;P rating would be downgraded if we don't have a tax increase at our last budget discussion. If you recall, S&amp;P was concerned about an operating deficit. Even without the proposed tax increase, we are certainly replenishing our surplus a lot more than we use the surplus this year. Mr. Catalonello suggested at the last budget meeting that we contact S&amp;P, but that was also rejected. The finance liaison also argued that one exceptional year should not be considered a positive trend. As we all know, we should expect a significant increase in electric surplus once the current contract expires next year, sometime in the middle of the year, and additional revenue will also come from the Green Village Road redevelopment. I believe it's time for us to pull a plan together based on our financial forecast for the next few years. Our revenue budget should reflect signed contract values and other revenues we definitely would bring in, instead of just arbitrarily asking the taxpayers for more money, especially when the additional tax dollars we collect are not going toward fixing roads or providing additional services. Thank you.
All right, before I have the other council members comment, I just want to clarify a couple of things. One, related to the open space taxes document that is going to the state does reflect 2%, but as indicated in multiple council meetings, that we will, right now, we had talked about the March 25th, but now have pushed it back to April 1st, as far as having a presentation about the demands on open space, and have a full discussion with public input as to where we should go with the open space tax. The other thing to keep in mind, and I've mentioned before, is as far as other borough revenues, you have to recognize they are always rep, um, represented 100% over a two-year cycle, and it's a conservative way of doing it. The way I mean it by a two-year cycle is, you see the amount that is currently budgeted for other sources, and as Ms. Tsukamoto pointed out, we don't budget 100%. Conservative approach, but where that comes in next year is in prior year surplus. So, over the two years, you always have 100% represented, and it gives you a safe, a safety net in a time when all of a sudden things are tough, or all of a sudden anticipated revenue is not there. So, the concept that we don't show it is not 100% accurate, I just want to be clear that over a two-year cycle, you will see 100% of the other revenues in there. One other point I wanted to make with that, but I think I probably covered everything, but it is a, as was pointed out by Dave Evans, there's some things in the future coming up, and that gives us that cushion, and again, it's 100% represented. Other just questions or comments from the council? Rob, and then Ben?
Ben would like to go first?
No, he did the introduction, so I think it's, yep.
I, I too am very concerned about the representation in the budget concerning the open space tax. I think some of the data that we have seen presented is very conservative indeed, and I would like the opportunity to discuss that before we go ahead and introduce the budget. I agree with a lot of what councilperson Tsukamoto has said, and furthermore, you know, I, my biggest concern is that, and it's not really a concern, but you know, I was finance liaison last year, and it's kind of a tough, you know, it's a tough finance liaison last year, and it's kind of a tough, you know, it's a tough road to hoe if you've never done it before. And I appreciate a lot of the kind words from liaison Wolkowitz regarding the budget last year. I would just wish that we would consider to call the rating agency as we did last year. And you know, if they're keen on a tax increase, well, at least we'll know, and as opposed to, you know, raising taxes one point four eight percent, you know, for general use, well, let's do it and put that money, let's recognize the revenue from some of the contracts that we have. You know, we're already a quarter of the year in, so one would assume that we are receiving monies from these contracts, and let's dedicate it to capital. Let's do something with that money. You know, I just think that there's no harm in asking, there's no harm in talking, and that's why last year when we had doubts, we, you know, we called them, and we found out and we, you know, crafted a budget that, you know, kind of took on a life of its own that tried to satisfy their requirements. Therefore, I would respectfully ask again that we exercise that option, talk to the people who seem to have our fate in their hands, and get a really good understanding as to what they expect. Absent that, I'm not confident that we're doing the right thing, and as such, I would not vote for the introduction of the budget. Thank you.
Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of points that have been raised I feel I should address. One has to do with the open space tax rate. I share your disappointment. I had approached the mayor, I believe it was late January or early February, and asked about a meeting with the MAF to verify the numbers. They had presented numbers to us, they looked very good. I felt before we wanted to put those numbers into an equation to determine what to do with the open space tax, we owed them the courtesy of sitting down with them and just saying one more time, "Listen, guys, this is what we're about to say. Are you comfortable with it?" I'm still waiting for that meeting.
It will happen. I've gotten commitment, I've had conversations, and between now and the April first meeting that will take place, and so we'll have commitment on their part, and as I pointed out, we'll have a spreadsheet on the wall, and we'll fill in all the blanks and come up with a document that we can work with.
Fine. And as I also mentioned before, for those of you who didn't read my working papers, raise your hands. The, I talked about the stealth tax, and what I meant by that was the open space tax, because it's not a number that gets discussed, right? It's two mil, your property tax, I'm sorry, the valuation on your house goes up, right? We've all got revalued, and all of a sudden, you see this tax creeping in under the door that you're not looking for, right? So I don't like that way of taxing people. People should know what's coming, should be able to plan for it, and have the opportunity to speak to it. I too would like to see that rate kept, reduced to a level so that the amount we collect is more or less the same as we collected this last year. I said that, I wrote about it, I don't know how else to establish that, but once we go through a discussion as to where the various sources of money may come from to pay for the forty-nine acres and the turf fields, we can then figure out how much we have to bond, and if indeed we can bond at a rate that enables us to service that debt with the current amount of money we collect with the open space tax, that tax will be reduced. It's very simple. As far as the Health Department and your comments about moving money around, you know, I don't know a better way to put this. I mean, we're not seeing money from heaven. If you take money from one bucket in the budget, then it's going to have an impact somewhere else. So you can take the hundred and whatever it was from the Health Department, out of the picture, give it back to our taxpayers, but rest assured that the surplus, whatever it is, will be short by that amount of money. It doesn't go away. So you have a one-time impact on the tax rate, i.e. you reduce it this year, and every subsequent year, you will have reduced the surplus by that amount of money, because you took it out at the outset, and it just continues to flow through. So I, you know, I can't tell you how you should feel about that. I have my own feeling. I ran businesses, I ran larger budgets than this, there's no way I would have accepted that, all right? If you don't want to increase surplus, that's fine, then you need to say that. But if you want to increase surplus, then I think a conservative approach to budgeting is the right way to go, and surplus is the objective. As far as SMP, I've met with them many times, I would have been happy to meet with them, I really don't care. If I thought the substance of what they had to say was foolish, I would challenge them. They did talk about our taxes, though. They did say the Borough appropriated five point two million in reference to 2010 of surplus into the current fund budget, and only generated three point six million, contributing to a surplus decline from forty-five percent in fiscal 2006. We, however, understand that the Borough Council might again elect to use fund balance for property tax release, I'm sorry, relief, which would further erode fund balance. So I don't, you know, they could have been more direct and just said, "We don't want you to decrease taxes," but that's as close as I know them to ever get. I think, look, I think what it all gets down to is a risk-return trade-off. Last year, when Rob was in this chair, he presented a budget, and I was, as I recall, you wanted three standard divisions of confidence that the surplus would not decline. I'm a hundred percent with you. You would refer to the budget, I believe, as Catalonello Lite when it came in at two percent increase, because you would have preferred a higher increase. I don't disagree with that either in the context that we're looking at. So it's, you know, it's a risk-return trade-off. I know you're a risk manager, I've done some of that, we all understand what the downside is and what the upside is, right? The upside, if we make a mistake here, the upside is, and I apologize in advance, if your taxes went up a little more than they should have, we'll make it up to you, because what I hope to be able to sit here and do and participate in is that every year we can tell you the same story. The budget worked, we did well, and we're lowering, and we're increasing your taxes by less than we did last year. Until we get to a point where we don't increase them at all. I think, I live in this town, and I pay a lot of taxes, so I share with you everyone's concern about not seeing them go out of sight. But the other side of this equation is, if we start giving it away and moving money around in such a way as to window dress, because that's in fact what it is, then you run risk that at the end of the year, you've had to dip into your surplus, you don't show a good surplus number, and as a result, you end up scratching around for funds so you can look better next year. That's not an exercise I want to go through. We are going to face SMP, I agree, we should talk to them, but, you know, based on what they wrote, it's pretty obvious what they're looking for. And we certainly delivered it in 2012, and I'd like to deliver it again in 2013, so we sit down with them in August. We're not going through a discussion that could lead to an outcome we don't like. But more importantly than that, the risk-return trade-off implicit in everything they said is something that I absolutely agree with. And, you know, I'd like to be here and say zero too, but I don't think that's the right decision today. It may or will be a right decision in a year or two. I hope I'm still here to have the opportunity to tell you that.
All right. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. I first have a question, I just want to clarify. The process that we followed this year with the budget, it was the same process we did last year. Well, we got the big book, we got an opportunity to go through it in detail, and then this piece of paper was given to us the night of the meeting, correct? All right. So I just wanted to make sure that nothing changed from last year. You know, I'm not going to reiterate a lot of what Ben said, because a lot of work did go into this, and we all looked at it pretty darn hard. But one thing that I appreciate about this budget, and what I found when I moved to Madison, you know, twenty-plus years ago, was that it's a prudent budget. It's a good, solid look at the go-forward position. You know, now's not the time to become reckless, and because we had a good year, we start saying, "Oh, boy, all this money's going to come in this year, and you know, it's going to continue for years to come." And that's not the case. While I can't go into details, what I'll tell you is this. You know, I'm a captain in the ambulance corps, and our survival is based upon very prudent budgeting. We rely on donations from the town and the residents, that's what I meant. And if one year, we have a good year, when we do the budget for the next year, we say, "Well, that was a blip." You know, there's no guarantees that's going to happen again, and you know, you're going to get some unexpected expenses, and you've got to be able to come through. You know, to go into the following year and say, "Oh, God, you know, I overestimated my revenues," well, now you're in trouble. There's no question about that, and now you've got to try to make yourself look good, find the money. You know, and I also equate it to the way you run your house. You know, do you spend money before you get it? You know, if you're promised a promotion, or a raise, or whatever, well, heck, if I get it, I'm going to wait till I have that money in my hand, number one. I may take a portion of it to cover some of my expenses, but if it's unanticipated, guess what? That's going in the bank, and that's what I'm going to use, you know, for down the road for an emergency. You know, remember this year, something happened, it was called Hurricane Sandy. Now, you know what Ben said is true. It's going to be tougher and tougher to get that money out of the federal government. Why? Because nobody's getting a straight answer of what's coming out of Washington or out of Trenton. You know, now's not the time to start, you know, looking at a crystal ball and saying, "Well, we could do this, we could do that." You know, what I learned is, this town is effectively on its own, and you've got to manage it like you would your own house. Now, we may or may not get that money for FEMA, but if we don't, guess what? We were able to pay that million dollars out of our own pocket by being very good stewards of our money in years past. You know, we weren't foolish, you know, we did the right thing. Now, this budget, again, this year, would I like to say zero percent and make a statement, you know, that we're going to have a zero percent increase? Yeah, sure. But guess what? That's not the right thing to do. The right thing to do is take a good, hard look at what's happened in the past, everything that's happened in the past, what could conceivably happen in the future, because the track record for the government and the environment is not that good, and you have to budget accordingly. I'll reiterate what I said before. We were able to pay for Sandy out of our own pocket, we did not have to go out for emergency borrowing. Now is not the time to become reckless. We have to stay the course and continue good, prudent, sound budgeting. And if that means a thirty-nine-dollar increase in my property taxes for the next year to guarantee that I have the same services going forward, and that if, God forbid, another storm like Sandy comes around and we have the money to pay for it, I'll pay the thirty-nine dollars. You know, that's a small price to pay. Thank you, Mayor.
Carmella, and then Rob.
I'm just going to make a couple of very simple statements. I'm looking at this revenue source that you people haven't seen, but it talks about health contracts and Project Pride and tax services, and it gives us figures of what we realized in 2012 and what we're actually budgeting, and I think that this is probably what Jeanie is alluding to. But I want to make a statement. What I learned from 2007 is something I'll never forget. It was a very, it was a very difficult year to be in the business that I was, and especially when you're coming in a situation that, you know, you're making a pretty good salary, and all of a sudden, it's like somebody let the water out of the bathtub. So I learned a lot from that. So one of the things I learned is to be more prudent when I make the money. There's money put aside, and I don't spend money that I don't have. And I don't run my house that way. We're getting very close to being, my husband's on a steady income, he's retired now. I'm hoping that maybe I'll be allowed to do that in the next couple of years. So I understand being prudent, but I don't want to spend money, I don't want to spend any money that we're not absolutely sure of. We keep on talking about the health contracts. We're working very, very, very hard and very diligently to make sure that the people of Madison are paying less towards their health services and whatever. So, you know, we're out there really walking the beat and trying to get more health contracts, but in that same token, we're going to be doing things to make sure that we're bringing in enough money, but we have no, there's no guarantee that X amount of people are going to get married, or X amount of people are going to die, or there's going to be the cats' and dogs' licenses and whatever. So what I learned from 2007, I like to bring to this table and say, "Hey, listen, you know, I think that we just can't rely on that surplus. We did it before." I don't think that, I agree with Ben with the amazing amount of hard work that he has put in and the hours and hours. He talks about everybody else working very hard on this, but this gentleman just, you know, walked up to this and just learned it and is doing absolutely wonderful. I want to talk a little bit about the open space tax. You know, I'm probably like one of the hardest people in the world to convince that we should cut the open space tax. I have a deep respect for that referendum and what we have done with that particular tax. So would I like to see more money in there? Yeah, absolutely, because there's a lot that we need to do. We're going to be losing a couple of fields when GVR gets redone, so we have to think about the over thousand kids that need to play recreation and whatever. So I would like to see a little bit of a cushion, but I also understand that there's a lot of people in this town that need some tax relief, especially seniors, people that are on fixed incomes and whatever. So I had many conversations with Ben. I talked to people about, "How do you feel about that open space tax?" Because that's what I want to know, is like how people are feeling about something like that. And so I've come to the conclusion, and I will push forward to having that tax, that tax rate cut so that it balances this particular budget. But I want to say thank you to you, Ben. It was, this is not an easy job. Your first year on, you know, as the rookie, and then taking on this monstrous job, but I think it's a great, I think it's a great budget. Thank you.
Rob?
Thank you. Catalonello Lite.
I'm quoting.
Yeah, no, 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 that's what it was called. It's funny.
I couldn't make that.
No, it's fine, it's fine. It was called that because initially, the whole proposal was kind of lost while we were on vacation, so we came back and we spent a couple hectic days. Listen, all, my main, I guess what I want to get across is, we're not being reckless when we're talking about one hundred fifty-eight grand, or whatever, one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. And if SMP says that, you know, we need to tax, we should go up to the statutory maximum, and we can find out other ways to cut it, okay? That's conservative, I think. We're talking a lot about revenue in this budget, but we didn't talk a lot about spending. And if you notice, we're spending down a little bit more in the surplus this year than we did last year, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So all in all, I think everyone realizes that everything we do is a risk-reward trade-off. We go out, we get in our car in the morning, we hope we get to where we're going to go, In my business, we go to work and we hope we have jobs by five o'clock, right? These days, right? It's a horrible market to be in. So I honestly think, and I think it's for the, in the best interest of the town... So I honestly think, and I think it's for the, in the best interest of the town, and I think that people would understand, if we went back and we actually found out that there's a big chance that we have to start paying half a base, you know, half a percent more on our debentures, that, you know, but, or we could spend, we could tax a little bit more now, maybe, you know, cut some electricity rates somewhere to make it up for people, that they would understand that. But, you know, we can't just look at the revenue side. We have to look at the spending side. You know, we, last year, we were vicious on spending. Okay? And we didn't do it because we wanted to. We did it because there were a number of years where I think things got a little bit out of control. And I would never wanna go back to those days either. So, you know, all I would ask is that, you know, if in fact we are gonna increase spending, we actually make that call. You know, and we're not, we're not being reckless by suggesting, if it's not gonna hurt our rating, to go on flat this year, because we know for a fact that in the middle of next year, we will see more revenue coming in from other sources. You know, we're not at a craps table, we're not at a blackjack table. Okay? We are, or at least I am, talking about what I perceive to be facts, based on the electricity contract running out next year. I personally think that, or some of the reasons we got into the problems we faced were that we were too dependent on that electricity utility throwing off money, and we weren't raising enough taxes. Okay? But we can't have it both ways. I'm very concerned about the electric surplus five, six years out, based on new technologies. You know, I think you're gonna see a lot of substitution from liquid natural gas and things like that that will, that will hurt our revenue. But either way, you know, I think, you know, here we are, we're focusing on, you know, we're saying we wanna be, you know, might be reckless by not increasing, and yet we never, we haven't made the call. And I, I respect the work you've done in the private sector. I've read a lot of your work. Not sure I agree on a lot of the clearing stuff you wrote, because it's really a pain in the neck right now. But having said that, you know, we should call them. And, you know, if they say it's a big deal, then, then let's figure it out. I mean, you could figure, it's not window dressing. We could figure out a way to protect our rating and to do it in a revenue-neutral or pretty much revenue-neutral way for the taxpayer. And for me, you know, I think that that, you know, that that is the, and then maybe we should start budgeting all of these contracts, so that we get a real idea of what our surplus is. Okay? As opposed to kinda just passing it along. You know, had I had the, I worked a lot of this in the fourth quarter. Had I had the chance to be finance lead on, again, this year, these are some of the things I was going to advance, maybe you'll get the chance next year, you know, if you're reappointed. But, you know, no one's being reckless, nobody's gambling. Okay? It's a difference of opinion, and I think the most important thing we can do is just call the agency. Thank you.
Are we ready for vote? This is, again, this is for introduction, so, or Oscar, and then we'll...
I do wanna ask a question. How would that affect the introduction of the budget if we were to make that call? Does it make a difference? Can anybody answer that?
We're statutorily obligated to introduce the budget by March 15th, and this is obviously our last council meeting before. I mean, in terms of S&amp;P, I have a copy of the February 9th, 2012 report when they gave us the negative outlook, and they're pretty specific. It says, we understand the borough will comply with the 2% property tax cap. To me, that's an inference that they wanted us to go to the 2% tax cap without using its property tax cap bank, which meant they felt that we could've spent more, 'cause what we did tonight and have done previously were millions of dollars under the tax levy cap. They were, the inference I draw from that is that they don't understand why we're not taxing more, using our tax cap bank. Then they go on to say, or going to the electric for an override. State law allows a referendum to go to the taxpayers to say, we wanna spend more than 2%. So the three points that they focus on in their, to me, this linchpin why they gave us a negative review is, we didn't tax the 2%, we didn't use our tax cap bank, and we didn't go to the electric for a referendum. It can't be clearer in terms of the paper.
So we can share that full...
We'll post it on the website.
And get that out to council members to read again. I think one of the things to keep in mind also, the, that's just one of the factors at the 1.5%, and it's not the only factor, but it's one of them. And the other is, we do, that we one-shot deal with, we can't sell any more properties. So there's other things that are, that are driving this. So we...
Mayor, can I finish my...
I think we've covered, yeah, I think it covered well. We'll take one more, and then we'll go to the vote.
Just one concern here. Mr. Evans mentioned earlier that we're about to go out for a $10 million bond. That is not the amount that we've been discussing. I don't want the public to have an impression that we are doing that.
I think one of the advantages of saying $10 million, the math is a whole lot easier. So $10 million, $500,000 over the life of the bond, well, okay, if it's 75, if it's 7.5 million, well, now you can do the math and reduce it by 75%. So I think it just, it made it a little bit easier, as we promised several times, not just tonight, that we will have a full discussion on the bonding amount at a future meeting as, that will not be funded, the concept that is out there, so people understand that, that bond issue will not be funded through the tax rate we're even discussing right now. That will be funded through open space. And so it is connected, as you pointed out, that you started your comments, that it is a tax and should be discussed at the same time, but it is a separate tax.
Can I just add one comment, Mayor, and then I'll stop?
All right, you promise.
Promise. That number is that, that Dave Evans mentioned in terms of the 10 million, and I think he was referring to the fact that we have approximately $7.7 million of MRC debt outstanding, which is the land acquisition note and the field, the active construction note. So that's about $7.7 million coming due in August. We also have a request from the Borough of Chatham for the joint meeting, which we've asked to defer, but they have indicated they wanna proceed in the $10 million bond financing. We are 66% of that bond financing if it was approved. Obviously, we're not gonna approve it. You put the two together, we're north of $10 million. That's one. Two would be the open space. If the tax is reduced to an amount that's not sufficient to service the debt that's outstanding, that was, that revenue stream was pledged as collateral to pay that bill, then it will have an impact on this budget, 'cause we won't have enough money to pay a bill. It's like going to a restaurant, five-star restaurant, ordering the best possible meal, and then when the bill comes, say you left the checkbook in the car. We have a bill to pay, and we have to pay it. And we appreciate the help from the MAF, but we're gonna have a bill, and if it's not paid through open space, it's gonna be paid directly through the tax rate in the debt service line item, and we'll have to amend the budget to pay the bill. And this decision, according, per Dave Evans, has to be made before the adoption of the budget on April 8th. So the meeting on April 1st will be a critical meeting to establish where we're going on open space. And if we're talking about fiscal conservancy in terms of spending, we should slow down, 'cause since January 1st, we've hired, we promoted five people in the police department, did a DPW promotion, we're hiring a truck driver tonight, and we hired a part-time record clerk. So let's stop spending across the board.
Thank you. All right. Well, I think we're, again, this is introduction, and so it'll be, I think we've covered everything unless there's some brave new ground. So let's get to the vote, and we'll move on.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Sukamoto?
No.
Mr. Catalinello?
Respectfully, no.
Mr. Landrigan?
Respectfully, yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wokelitz?
Yes.
Again, the hearing is April 8th, which I had mentioned, beginning of the rescheduling, we may not need two meetings in a row. Obviously, we need two meetings in a row, so April 1st will be very busy related to open space and bonding, and April 8th will be the hearing for the budget. All right, reports for committees, and I will just remind council members, the intention is reports from committees and try to keep it to that, unlike last meeting. Appreciate it. Health, Ms. Vitale.
Okay. I'm gonna be good. Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from the Health Officer. She will be having another food handlers course, and the next set of food handlers courses are scheduled for April 1st. There's gonna be a lot of stuff going on that day. Restaurants are encouraged to get their registrations in, so they are eligible for the 2014 Food Safety Award of Excellence. Registration forms can be found on the Health Department website. Part of the health education programs, they're still looking for some peer leader training to work with Project Healthy Bones. And the training is 3/19, at March 19th and March 21st, from 9:30 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon at the Civic Center. If you want to register, you can call 973-784-4900, extension 208. And this number can also be found on our website for the, with a flyer. The Matter of Balance Coaches Training is also looking for members to facilitate their Matter of Balance programs. Their training will be on March 27th and the 28th at the Civic Center from 9:30 to 3:30 p.m. Anybody who's registered, who is interested in that can call that same number at 973-784-4900, extension 208. Take Control of Your Health will begin March 20th and continue for six weeks at the Senior Center of Chatham. The program will run from 1:00 p.m. to 3:30. Anyone interested in registering can call 1-800-247-9580. This number is also on the website. The website is very good and filled with lots and lots of information, so if you go on that, that Health Department website, you'll be able to see a lot of what's going on. We are now, the Madison Health Department has been approved to participate in the New Jersey Vaccine for Adults Program. This program allows for those who are uninsured or underinsured to receive vaccines such as meningitis, zystebol, hepatitis A, and hepatitis B. So the Health Department is hoping to have that vaccine available by mid-April to May. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Sukamoto?
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department continues to make permanent repairs to the damages from Sandy, and this work is going to continue for quite some time. As we said in the budget meeting, we all have a very great appreciation for our Electric Department. I do feel sometimes that we're taking our Water Department for granted. So I'm planning on working with Mr. Mednet and also the superintendent to bring a presentation here in a future meeting, so we can all have a better understanding of our water utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Good idea. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Catalinello?
Thank you, Mayor. Yard Waste Collection will begin on Monday, March 18th. We will be starting to re-grind mulch on the Wednesday following that, and then the DPW will coordinate with Jim Burnett, when we can start deliveries to residents, and that is complimentary mulch. And I believe we have lots of it. The Morris County Municipal Authority, Utilities Authority, has announced their 2013 Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Events. There are four scheduled for 2013. They're on this flyer here. Jim, we have more of them? Available here. Household hazardous waste items include pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, oil-based paints and stains, paint thinners and solvents, automotive fluids including motor oil, antifreeze, transmission steering and brake fluids, pool chemicals, fluorescent bulbs, and household cleaning products. These items can be disposed of at the drop-off events or by scheduling an appointment at the MCMUA facility in lovely Mount Olive, New Jersey. A flyer that includes a complete list of drop-off event dates, locations, and acceptable items is available on the table here at the clerk's office. Please visit rosenet.org if you have any questions on hazardous waste, recycling, or garbage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan?
Okay, that's gonna be a hard act to follow, but I'll give it a wing. Okay, this is from the Chamber of Commerce.
It's Catalinello Light.
All righty. On Thursday, March 21st, at 6:30 p.m., the Chamber Spring Membership Happy Hour at Plaza Lanes will take place. On Saturday, March 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., the Easter Fun Fest will take place. Parents and their children are invited into downtown to collect toys and candy-filled Easter eggs from participating businesses. And that's March 23rd. On Friday, March 29th, from 10:00 to 4:00, Salvatore Minari, who you saw up here before, will be hosting a Beauty Will Cure Day. It all proceeds will benefit the, will benefit the American Cancer Society. From the Senior Advisory Committee, the AARP Tax Aid Program is in progress. March is fully booked for the aid volunteer councils, who are available each Wednesday through April 10th, so if you need their help, I, the advice would be to get in touch with them soon. The Senior Fair, which is held at the, on Walnut Street, 28 Walnut Street, at the Senior Building, will take place on April 14th, 13th, from 10:00 to 1:00. I was there last year, and I'll encourage everybody to go again this year. There's an incredible amount of information that'll be available for anyone who's taking care of elderly parents. It's a worthwhile event, so please try to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to announce tonight, the 200 Club of Morris County will be honoring firefighter and EMT James Blair and firefighter Troy Pahowick with Valor of Awards, and patrolman James Caveza for a Meritorious Award. They are being recognized for the lifesaving efforts at a structured fire on November 17th, 2012, at 85 Park Avenue, where they rescued Shannon Caddogan and her dog Roxy from the burning building. And this is the 200 Club's 41st Annual Valor and Meritorious Awards Dinner on Thursday, April 25th, 2013, at Birchwood Manor in Whippany. The dinner takes place and the ceremony from 6:00 to 10:00. It's $85 per person, no walk-ins, you have to reserve, and it's www200clubofmorriscounty.com. And just click on the calendar. And so that is very exciting for our three safety personnel. And another interesting thing happened. There's a resident in Madison who has a German son-in-law, and he's a firefighter, and he wanted to see what kind of facilities we have here in the United States. They called the chief, Lou DeRosa, and they met with the chief, went over the whole fire department and all the equipment, looked at it. He was absolutely amazed at our overall spotless condition of the premises and the equipment, 'cause you know Germans are neat freaks. So their overall comments made everyone in the fire department feel very good about themselves, and we should be. We have a great fire department and police department. I'm also the liaison to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, and we just recently met and reviewed a number of ongoing projects. And the purpose of this committee is to review local streets and ongoing street projects to accommodate many modes of travel, including pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, and mass transit riders. The committee wants to ensure transportation on our roads in all its forms is safe. And so we just reviewed Rosedale, which will soon be under construction, and Sampson Avenue to make sure they meet our Complete Streets criteria. We are getting a grant for Sampson. And the Complete Streets include, when you, for the design, sidewalks, pedestrian intersections, bicycle facilities, traffic calming measures, landscaping, and transit accommodations. Specifically, we also discussed ways to make the intersection of Britton and Greenwood safer for pedestrians, and suggestions have included, which the police are gonna follow up with, LEDs crosswalk signs. And also, one of our participants is going to talk to the PTOs, because part of the problem is opening and dismissal times of the schools, Central Avenue and the junior school. And finally, the Police Department has also been collecting traffic count and speed data on both Park Avenue and Ridgedale Avenue, and will be analyzing that data and perhaps coming up with some suggestions. Then, maybe, perhaps some of you saw in the Madison Eagle that our Madison Police Department will be helping with the counties and states' gun buyback amnesty program. And on Friday, March 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., St. Paul Inside the Wall on 2005 Madison Avenue, also known Bailey Ellard, will be one of the two collection sites in Morris County. And you just walk in with your gun, and there are certain guidelines for the safe delivery of weapons with no questions asked. The program will accept firearm arms from juveniles without disclosure of names, and then the participants will receive... then the participants will receive cash for the guns they bring in. BB guns will also be collected, but you can't get any money for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Nothing additional.
I figured you had covered everything. Thank you.
I'm reporting.
Thank you, everyone, for their good reports there. Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right, this is the first of two rounds of invitation for the public for discussion. Rules on this one are on agenda discussions, and we have two, which is appropriation of 50,000 from the Reserve for Filtration System and the Water Utility, and also the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. Also, you may comment or ask questions on any of the resolutions. If you're gonna comment on any of those, please step forward, state your name, your address, and the resolution number you're referring to, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. With those rules, or anyone wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Sosciella, Park Avenue, Madison. Just a couple of things. Can I ask one question, Ray, and maybe you can answer it? Dave Evans, do we pay him by the job or by the hour?
That's, I guess we do have a resolution on that.
It's an annual contract.
Annual contract.
Annual contract. I would like to have paid him, what happened just now among the discussion with the budget, that should have been before Mr. Evans, and then maybe he could answer some questions, because according to him, out of 58 towns they do, we're doing great. And what took place here, I think it's, I think it's bad for what's going on in Madison. In other words, this stuff all should have been talked to at that executive meeting. And quite obviously, no matter how much is all talked all night, 4 to 2, it's gonna be passed. But I just don't like what's going on. And it shouldn't happen in this town. It was a good discussion, but it, you know, I don't know. It, I just felt very uncomfortable. It seems like what's going on in the national level, it was no communication, no compromise, whatever, I don't know. But anyway, Resolution 100, can you explain that to me about the suit with the border health? What does that cost to us?
Matt, you wanna take that? That's the, the...
Settlement with John Feis.
There's an agreement in place, so all we can say is the matter's been resolved to the satisfaction of all parties.
Well, how much are the costs?
Well, as I've explained in the past regarding our insurance, and I'm not gonna talk specifically about this case, we have insurance through the Morris County Joint Insurance Fund and through the Municipal Access Liability Carrier. We have a $20,000 deductible, and we're responsible for the first 20% of 250,000. So anytime we have a lawsuit, if there's a settlement, we're responsible for the first $70,000. And that's the case with any lawsuit that we ultimately settle with, whether it's this case or any case in the Borough of Madison, we're on the hook for the first $70,000.
Did it cost us $70,000?
Sir, I can't comment further on that. There is a, an agreement in place, and what we can say is the matter's been resolved to the satisfaction of all parties. What I can tell you is that the, we are responsible for the first $70,000 of a lawsuit.
Do we have any, we have more suits in the, in the future coming up?
We have other litigations that are ongoing all the time. We just, we're in court today on getting a, somebody to pay a judgment that they owe the borough. So we do handle litigation quite a bit. I'm not gonna comment on specific litigation, because that's inappropriate, and I don't wanna reveal attorney-client privilege communications.
And again, going back to, next year, when we do the budget, all that, keep that guy, if we're paying him by the night, make sure he stays here all night, just don't do his thing and get outta here. Then they can answer some questions for you, because he's the pro. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And I would just wanna say that what you heard is the way the system works, a spirited discussion and not everyone in agreement, and there's nothing wrong with that. That's the way it works. Anyone else wishing to be heard under the current guidelines? Tom?
Tom Bintinger, 20 Rolling Hill. I just wanna compliment the Borough Council, the Mayor, and the Chief Financial Officer on the budget discussion and preparation. I just wanna encourage you, when you're dealing with the open space tax, this is one of these that's not a one-year event. It's going to be at least a 10-year projection that you're gonna have to take a look at. You're not gonna come back every year to decide what the rate's gonna be. It's gotta take a look at, you're gonna make sure you're gonna cover what needs to be covered in that. And that leads me then to the obvious next conclusion is, that same approach should be used for the annual budget. Number of items that were raised here need long-term considerations. What is the size of the surplus? I heard one rule of thumb offered, I don't know what others out there, but that is a given. If you can have that, you can know for five years, 10 years out. The deficiency in the capital fund, that again, is something that we run like an accordion, 250 one-year, 500, nothing, a million dollars. That ought to be on a standard. We ought to know what we're looking for. And the rest of those things, I think will then allow, I think, an ordinary citizen to understand how things fit together, as opposed to looking this one year at a time. So I encourage you to deal with that.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to our agenda's discussions. Our first one, appropriation of 50,768.90 from the Reserve for a Filtration System and a Water Utility, and 669,231.10 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for 2013 Water Main Replacement Projects to include portions of Ridgedale and Greenwood Road.
It's you. Bob.
Yeah, you're up, Bob.
It's Morris Town.
Yeah.
You running for office, Bob?
No, 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 no. Yes, I've been around long enough, though. Okay, so we are on the Rosedale Avenue Improvements?
We're on the Filtration Water Utility and the...
Turn that camera somewhere else. Ridgedale. I'm sorry. Put me up, good.
Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with everyone present, so we'll start looking for you.
Again, are we on ordinance four, four or five?
You're discussing the water main... Ordinance five. The water main, so which we've discussed in Capitol, which was through all of Ridgedale.
Yes. As of, as of our meeting, Capitol meeting last Saturday, I believe, or Saturday, two Saturdays ago, it was our collective agreement to move forward with the entirety of Ridgedale Avenue. So we made a decision, certainly before these agenda documents came out, to go for the entire appropriation of 720,000 instead of 420,000. So I'm a little bit confused as to these numbers at this point. So I believe these numbers have to get amended. Is that correct, Mr. Cody?
No. No.
All right, why don't we step back? The original Capitol request was for $300,000 for Ridgedale, but only to do a portion, and $120,000 to do a water main for a portion of Green Village Road.
Correct.
At the budget hearing, when I was at a state, Councilman Calinello rightfully said it was appropriate, if the entire road needs to be done in Ridgedale, why don't we take on the entire piece and increase that? Your estimate was to do the entire Ridgedale piece would be $600,000. So the reason this is $720,000 is $600,000 to do the entirety of Ridgedale and the $120,000 for Green Village Road. The question you raise is whether we had enough money in the Water Capital Budget sufficient to support that total expenditure. We confirmed with Robert Calvert, who is joint Dave Evans...
Supplementary orders?
That there was, in the temporary budget, there was $200,000 in the 2013 temporary budget for the Water Capital. When we add that to the current balance, without touching the Reserve for the Water Meter Replacement, we don't have to touch that. We have adequate funds to fully fund this ordinance, and the CFO is so certified.
Got it.
So, okay.
Any questions?
Bob, thank you for that presentation.
So sorry.
And the, obviously, we haven't finalized, well, we haven't approved the Capitol budget yet, but we've had the suggestions, and we know that Ridgedale is gonna be very time-sensitive as far as school year, so if we, if we wait to get this moving, it's gonna handcuff a little bit, working around Central Avenue school time and the high school school time. So any questions or discussions on this? I think you covered pretty well during the Capitol. All right, so we have this listed for introduction. Thank you.
Complete Streets, I think this is a quick one.
Last year, we set the tables pretty nicely with this. The Complete Streets Committee, a couple of its prime things is walkability, bikeability, safe routes to school, all things that are part of sustainable Madison. So to have representation from sustainable Madison to Complete Streets is a good thing. So this formalizes that. We've had a volunteer already meeting on a regular basis, serving as an official liaison, and will make this appointment, provided we pass the resolution. Any questions on that? Ginny?
Yeah, I just wanna say that Heather came to many of the meetings last year, and certainly a good contributor, and I think this is just the good, right thing to do. It'll be a great addition to the committee.
Yeah.
She's very good.
Yeah. I was, I was gonna say something about Heather when, with the official appointment, but since you brought it up, I think she's up there for rookie, the potential Rookie of the Year honors in Madison. We have one in the DDC, and Heather has been, believe it or not, a resident for, I think, all of 18 months, and has really taken leadership at Central Avenue, taking the, changing the mindset of getting to school with more and more students walking with their parents. And if that's what she's doing the first 18 months, I'm looking forward to a lot of what Heather can do for Madison. All right, ordinance for hearing, there are none. So we are now on to invitation for discussion number two, and this is when you can comment on anything, not necessarily restricted to the agenda, but again, we have a three-minute max. Please state your name, your address, and then start your comments, and keep them three minutes. Are there's anyone, is there anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction of Ordinances.
Okay. Ordinance is scheduled for first reading this evening. Have a hearing date set for Monday, April 1st, 2013. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for the first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance four, 2013, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, rescinding Ordinance forty-two, 2009, establishing a Standing Finance Committee for Joint Meetings with the Madison Board of Education.
Ben?
Ben.
Move?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you drink, did you drink, you drank with the same fountain that Bob Vogel was drinking from there.
All right. I have a motive. I'll second it.
All right. Discussion, just a reminder, we mentioned this, that a couple of years ago, thought it was a great idea to establish the Standing Finance Committee of the Board of Education. After it was established, it never met, but we have, we have another vehicle through shared services to make this happen. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes. I'm looking for what, what's going on here.
Right, we need a break. Ms. Bailey? And Mr. Wolkowitz.
Yes. I might have to call for an earlier German here, I don't know.
Yeah. It may be redundant.
All right, ordinance five, ordinance five, 2013.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating 50,768.90 from the Reserve for Filtration System and the Water Utility, and 669,231.10 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for Water Main Replacement of Municipal Roads, including portions of Ridgedale Avenue and Green Village Road.
Mayor, I move ordinance five dash 2013.
And I second it.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Calinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Consent Agenda Resolutions.
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the Consent Agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Consent Agenda Resolution ninety-six, 2013, to Resolution one-ten, 2013.
Second that.
Discussion?
Do we have to add the name to one-oh-seven?
It's been added and posted on the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny?
Yeah, I would like to discuss Resolution one-oh-five.
Resolution opposing Senate Bill S-214 and companion Assembly Bill. Okay, we will pull that and vote on that separately. Anything else? Okay, so it is, Consent Agenda is all but R-105, 2013.
Okay. Roll call?
Roll call, yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Calinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, but I will abstain from Resolution one-ten.
And Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I may have a motion for R-105, 2013.
I move that, second.
Discussion? Ginny?
Yeah, question regarding this one. Do we currently ask landlords to register and charge them additional fee instead of what they have to do with the state?
There's no fee. We register through the clerks, three units and above, and there's no fee for that.
There's no, less than three, I'm sorry. Just for clarification. Single, one and two-family, non-owner occupied, register with the clerk. Three or more, register with the state. The state then sends us the form, and we maintain the logs.
But there's no fee.
There's no fee.
Oh, okay. So if we're getting, my second question, are we getting the information from the state? It seems like that we do, right?
We do.
So if I understand correctly, that these bills, the two of them, the intent is to reduce government overlap, because the state is doing it and we're doing it over here, and my understanding is that they send the data to us anyway, so why...
We do not currently register here in the borough, the three family.
So what, what's really the intent of opposing this bill? We're getting the data. I guess my question is really, why are we opposing this bill? They're making it available to us, why do we wanna repeat the work that the state is doing?
Was there feedback from League of Municipalities?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what was the...
That information is not in the packet, that's why we're asking.
Yep.
Yeah, let me just speak to that for a little bit. Over the years, you know, one of the most important things for the Housing Committee is to know about these one and two-family houses, and we've done a relatively good job. People do register, those one and two-family, but the three families seem to kind of slip between the cracks. And I think that this is very, very important for the registration and for people to start getting involved with registering all of these, these multifamily houses. You know, the books downstairs are a wealth of information. I think that when we're starting to have problems, and the Housing Committee is starting to have some problems in multifamilies, I think we have to know what they, they really are. So, you know, I agree with...
I think one of the issues, I think maybe the biggest thing is the second, where it's the second whereas, which it says timely inventory. So is it a concern that we don't get the feedback, the list from the state in a timely manner, that if we, is, am I...
I don't know, I'm listening, trying to figure out what's going on with this.
Well, I guess another thought, since we're all looking kinda to be...
You know what, I think it's the way it's written that is like, kind of confusing.
Why don't you table this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and we can get the League of Municipalities...
If you table it, I can give you, and give you some more information for your next meeting.
I'm just on the League of Municipalities discussion.
Yeah.
Problem inside.
Yeah, as we look around, it'd be a wild...
I tried to find it today, but I couldn't find anything from the League of Municipalities, so we just don't have enough information.
I'll send it home again. I think we got the background on it.
Yeah, I'll send it home again.
Wonderful packets, yeah.
So, motion to table?
Maybe didn't get it with this packet, that's the problem.
No, right. Maybe.
Yeah.
So if we'd read it three weeks ago, it went there and there.
All right.
So motion to table it in a second.
Motion to table, please.
Okay, I'll move that.
Second that.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Calinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
So we will...
Bring that back.
Bring it up, and we'll make sure it's on the agenda discussions, not just consent agenda, so we have the information. Okay. Unfinished business, there's none. Approval of vouchers.
Public Safety, $36,773.92. Health and Public Assistance, $1,137.65. Public Works and Engineering, $216,563.99. Community Affairs, $4,565.67. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,023,144.92. Utilities, $51,887.87. Total is $3,334,074.2. Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers. Second?
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Calanello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
For the, under new business, I'd like to make this following surprise appointment, requesting council confirmation for the Complete Streets Advisory Committee appointment as the Sustainable Madison Liaison, or Representative, rather, Heather Shepherd. I have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
Second?
Discussion? Vote, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Calanello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.